Please join me. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its justiciable.
Hello, everyone in here, out there. This is the July twenty-third meeting of the Town of Canada Planning Board. Thanks for coming out. Everybody knows everybody. The front desk. Does anybody want me to go around and introduce clips? Anything we do, I do want to point out Tim Schneider, alternate playing board members active tonight. Mark Talbot is over in Europe, so it would have been a little tough to, for him to zoom in. So everybody else is here on the board. We had Eric Cooper representing MRB tonight. So that's a new face but an old face. Right, Eric? Eric used to be our town planner for some of the folks that go back that far. Back in the odd thousands. All right, we're going to follow the agenda as published and we have the one public hearing tonight. And that public hearing was newly advertised in the Daily Messenger on July sixteenth. That's for a subdivision out on Oifus Road. Mr. Baker, it's his application, so we'll be getting to that later on the agenda, but we will follow the agendas as shown, so. Want to point out, we have two exits. Should you have to leave the room, make sure you know where they are. Hopefully, that will not be the case. And it's the first order of business would be purely to the floor. Is there anyone here or virtually that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the planning board agenda? One, two, okay, then we'll go right into our agenda, starting with CPN twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three, one-twenty-six. McMahon will associate's representing the candidate great country estates, Mr. Burke, the owner. And that's at five-five-five Purdy Road. We talked about a little bit last month. And Greg, you're back to, I guess, address some of the issues that came up at that meeting?
Yeah.
And you want to tell us where you stand in taking care of those items?
Yes, we following the meeting, we have received comments from MRB. We responded in writing to all of those comments. It was provided to the town. We also, based on several of those comments, we revised the seeker application. There was some conflicting information regarding the number of units. There were a couple sections that I not completed the checkboxes and so forth, so we did complete that. In going through all of MRB's comments, we did not have any significant, we had no significant issues. We, many of the items are informational for when we go into final plans for each of the phases, but we've been, as I say, we've been through all the comments. We've addressed many of them. And I think that's where we stand today, available to answer any additional questions that the board might feel.
Okay. Well, I think one of the big issues we talked about last time was the number of phases and phase lines, and you said you were going to go back and look at that and try to pin them down. Were you able to do that?
We're looking right now, where we're at. We've got a hundred and thirty-five units and we've got seven phases shown, which plus or minus, we're, we're somewhere, you know, between eighteen and that would be an average of eighteen to twenty units per phase. Where we've got to work with the applicants. As what we're going to have to do is evaluate as we move into phase one. A lot will depend on costs as we develop costs for, for each of these spaces. I mean, they're with the extension of sanitary sewers, water mains and full roadways per town standards. A lot will depend on what the owner feels they can lots that they can lease over a period of time and also budget-wise, what they will be able to construct on a phase-by-phase basis. So we're working through that, but right now I think we're, we're sticking with, with the proposed seven phases.
That's true.
My, this, oh, yeah, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't misspeak. And we, we face those phases and you know, certainly coming in off of, of York, it's coming in off of Purdy Road. That is where we're bringing our utilities in. And so we would develop from Purdy, moving to the south. And so phase one would bring utilities in off of Purdy. There's a stormwater pond which is shown in the northeast corner of the property. That would serve all of phase one. It also serves a portion of phase three and phase four. Whether, I, I think the big question I've got to go back and look at is, is you know, are, would we go from, let's say, phase one to phase two, or should I renumber these and possibly have a different sequence? I, I don't know from our perspective whether it makes a big difference what the phase number is, but I can say, you know, what we've shown approximate boundaries for phase one would be our, would be our initial development.
So we need, because of the potential for dedication of infrastructure and then things like, you know, there's a recreation area. When is it going to get built to support this stuff? And, you know, I think that looks fine anyway. We just need something firm. We need a firm phasing plan.
Okay.
That can change it anytime. I mean, you come in, we do it, it happens all the time in this sport. You do an amended overall preliminary site plan to change your phasing, and then usually it happens in conjunction with your final phase two. I mean, probably most developers that we see in a, in a big subdivision like this change it every time they come in for for final, for the next phase. But we need something pinned down to have benchmarks, you know. You know, to, I think the park, the recreation area needs to be built in earlier phases. You know, the town can't accept dedication of the first part total unless your proposal dedication is totally
Well, the dedication would only be for the sewer and the water.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah. I mean, the park itself would be supposedly private. It'll be maintained by the, by the development. So I understand what you're looking for.
Yeah, and the other thing, we want to make sure you don't get into a situation where you have more than thirty units on a dead-end street, then it runs afoul to the fire and safety issues and again, it's, if, if you want to go with this phase plan, seven phases as laid out, as part of your application here this evening. We can certainly consider it unless somebody on the board has issues with the way this phasing is laid out. If not, this would be the phasing plan that would be part of preliminary approval and any changes would be required coming back with the final.
I guess before you, maybe, I don't see, I didn't see MRB's comments or your responses. They're not in the cover.
They should be.
Maybe I They are, yeah.
Okay. And maybe this is addressed, but someone, I mean, I'm assuming one, two, and maybe three, and part of four go to that stormwater. Four and five go to this one, and six and seven go to that stormwater pond, but I think that we need to confirm that for phasing purposes. Is that, I mean, you could probably tell it to death.
Yeah, that, that was the, the intent. I mean, I can, I can certainly revisit this and come back to you in two weeks for Richard's meeting with that.
Okay. But Well, if you're, if you're not comfortable with this phasing plan, then it could go afoul at some point. We might as well tie this thing down as best we can at this point. Rather than getting into a lot of revisions later on as we go through the final.
So we get together in the next week or so and review this.
Okay. Other items, Eric, I know it was quite a review letter from the MRB and it was responsible by a man. And were there any issues in there that you wanted to bring up?
No, the only thing that I talked about earlier was just getting down the basic plan.
Yeah, that seemed to be my biggest issue. Probably no, you've had.
I had two thoughts. I mean, on your phasing, it seems like you're jumping around. My thought process is if you're mind building, there's no phase one, phase two, in place of three, four in place of five, that way you're at least developing out from your central core and not infrastructuring too much before you get too far. And then expanding out kind of that way. And the other thought I have is some of your plans and in MRB comments is that you're showing a fifty-foot buffer on your plans.
Yes.
But it's not in accordance with the town code. There's a buffer gap. But they actually says it has to be densely planted trees, shrubberies, et cetera, separating road from, from the road, the park itself.
Right, we did, we do have the buffer. We did show a landscape plan, but one of the comments was more densely vegetated.
Yeah, in accordance with the, the code would be the best way to say it all.
Okay.
I saw your plan, it had like three trees at the street level, and then you're utilizing the hedgerow that's there. Those are things that we as a board could mitigate. But I think the most important is roadside, that kind of thing. Your park is beautiful, but the code says that.
Yeah, I think we're talking, we're talking mainly a short piece of the north property line and the east property line.
Correct.
And it's good. So, you know, we will take, and, and again, I'd like to, you know, we've got preliminary, but as we develop final plans, we would certainly get into a much more detailed landscape plan for each of the, on a phase-by-phase basis.
Yeah, I just want to bring that up because your, your two lots close to Purdy may be too close.
What I did, we did adjust that. There was a question, I think.
Fifty feet.
Yeah, fifty feet. One of those lots was like, I think I bet forty-two or forty-three. And, and we've adjusted, we've adjusted the property lines to accommodate that. So I did, that was one of the comments that we addressed.
Okay. You might have addressed it. We didn't see it.
Yeah.
So we're just bringing up things that we talked about the last meeting and making sure we haven't covered.
Yeah.
Okay, we talked about the phasing. Talked about the MRB review. You, you also was gonna, you were gonna look at the storage area and putting some buffers around that, I believe, would be expanded storage area. Again, not seeing any revised plans. It's tough to see if that was taken care of. Have you thought about that or?
Yeah, well, we've, you know, we feel that there's there's enough area for it. Right now, it is an existing storage area. And in the short term, well, maybe not such a short term, there will be no development around it. It's in one of the very last phases as we get down, or what may be one of the last phases. But you know, we can certainly take a look at that from a room, based on what's there. We've got seventy-five existing units and I think there's, last I looked, there's maybe ten coming, boats or about ten. So we're not, we're anticipating, you know, based on that, we may need an area for somewhere around twenty-five, possibly boats or campers or those types of vehicles. So from a room standpoint, we, we have more than sufficient room. I think what I can, there is some existing fence on there and I can add some fence to the plan to just show that there would.
Yeah, I think we can actually talk about the storage area, is that?
Yeah.
How to be treated, yeah.
Of fence, yep.
Yeah, I guess a lot of your responses were, we will review and revise. And I guess we were hoping that maybe in the coming two weeks that whatever you were going to revise, you'll revise. And make those changes. So, so when we make a decision on the, on the preliminary, that we have all the information following, including the latest plan.
Yeah.
I mean, on one hand, I, you know, I don't want to just create revision because it's quite a plan set you have and have to go through it and revise it every time you're going to move a tree or something like that. That certainly doesn't make sense. But I think there's enough stuff, enough information that we're asking for here. It justifies a revision.
We understand.
Okay. Board, anything else we want to send the applicant to, back to the drawing board with? Sure.
And we talked about it last time, but I'd like to see revised plans that show cross access easements for the two lots for ingress, egress and recreation. So that most people can use the open recreation area on phase two, and these people can use the one on that. And then it's
It's all under one.
It's all, it's one, it's not a, not two separate properties. It's all one.
You're just adding on to exist. It's just building on vacant land that's part of.
That's part of that existing development, so. Yeah, there, there is.
That's great.
There is no separation of of residents. They with the construction.
Share and share alike.
Yeah, with the construction of the park area, that becomes available for all of the residents of the, of the park. And as does any other amenities that, that goes in there. Just, for example, the, the storage area is part of the existing park right now.
That's about this, oh, that's the, the proposed is actually existing.
It is, is an existing storage area. The oh, there's a, a large rectangular building and a small building. That's the maintenance facility down there and that's all kind of where the existing storage. So even though that's in, let's follow the
Yeah, the only second party involved on this property would be the water and sewer, right? I mean, they're the only entities other than the Burks and
Yes.
Corporation.
Yeah.
So as, as long as we get easement agreements for the water and sewer across property, I think that's
That's what we want, sewer and water, but we also need confirmation from the sewer and water that that's what they're willing to do.
Yeah, and I don't know, again, as we get into final, if there'll be stormwater maintenance agreements, whether you need excess easements to the stormwater facility. So that, that can also be handled as we face by face, providing access to the stormwater.
And any utilities.
I just want to be very clear, though. It's the condition of approval for preliminary that those will be provided for each, at each final. And add conditions at final, if you've given conditions at preliminary.
You don't.
Agreed. You're, you're right. We don't have to do it, but
Yeah.
Let's make sure that gets into our conditions.
But you don't want to see the legalese until finals rather than preliminary. It makes sense because it could change. It could change, so why?
I mean, there's no way this, this stormwater pond is going to be exacted right there by the end. There's maybe, but it's unlikely here.
Yeah, things, things will get tweaked as, as design proceeds and
And one other, so I'm, then I, I have my legal consideration is phasing. We need a lot of definition there. And but, but it can change.
Okay.
And then at one other, it's just question concern. Your phase two recreation area is pretty sealed off by when it's at full buildout, it's going to be blocked. It's going to be in everybody's backyards, but it's not going to.
No, there's, there's actually accesses for each of the on the phasing plan, they don't show up the way, but there is a, an access from each of the bordering streets into the recreation area. And there is parking off, off-street parking at each of those access points.
I, I guess my question is, is it big enough to see as to for safety and public safety issues if someone is swinging back there by themselves and they, you know, is anybody going to see them if there's criminal activity going on in there? It just seems a little, that's, I wouldn't want you to lose any lots, but I, I would ask if you could ship them. I think it's a good idea to have invisible from the front.
What's required side yard on these units?
Ten feet.
One, ten feet.
Ten feet.
So it'd be ten feet, one side, ten feet the other. So you'd have a twenty-foot opening between each unit.
Okay.
And, and the access.
Yeah, these are individual. It's not like, say, a row of townhouses.
No, no, they're not connected.
With, you're not seeing into the back. I, I think, I, I mean, we certainly feel it's going to be visible and
I said the planning boards comfortable that I am, just wanted it to be considered.
Well, and the interconnection of the green spaces was something the ECB had brought up and I think having those interconnections off the streets. You know, essentially meets that.
Yeah. I think that's shown a bit clearer on the sheet seven thirty-three. The layout and the playgrounds.
Good, yeah. Parking and everything.
There's parking areas, there's spaces between the units.
Okay.
And you did change some of the parking, you're sorry, the on-street parking or off-street?
Yeah, the specific area was up where, up near in phase one where there was a T-intersection. And you'll see that when I revisit the plan. We eliminated some of that off-street parking. We didn't want it right in the middle of the intersection.
And the trail surface, I think we talked about that. It's going to be crushed down or?
Well, I, I don't know that that was, it, it would be you know, wood chips or cruston or asphalt. I, I think we'll have to
Okay.
When we get, when we get to the phase that includes the, the park area, we'll have to specify the material, but it will be a, something that's maintainable and
Think of those down noses in the apartments next to us was just the question.
Yeah, but look, look how it looks too. I mean, weeds grow up through it. I, you know, crustance fine as long as you keep, you know, keep on it.
With it all being on the same lot.
Yeah.
And management, you know, it's different than if it's an HOA, they're managing it.
True.
You know, it's hard to.
Oh, I, I would think that, you know, this applicant will take better care of. We do, we do have a standard for trails in our site designs. You can certainly look at that. Allows for either crushstone or asphalt or, I don't think it includes wood chips. Or, what else we got? I will say that I read your seeker lead agency letter. Very impressive. That just came, I don't know if the board member sold or not. Sort of covered a lot of the issues regarding the environmental issues in the seeker part one, so it covers a lot of the items that were addressed in the, in the seeker. And I did talk to a resident of yours, spoke very well of your operation. And way that the Burks are the owners and operators and hopefully they'll continue to operate it, so it was a willing endorsement from them. And just going out there and looking at, you can tell it's, it's a well-run community. County Plan Board had a comment on FEMA. Whether it was a new floodplain, do you remember CNN? Greg? It's been a while since I read it, so.
Yeah, that, we show, we showed the floodplain that, to the best, there are posed FEMA maps for Ontario County, new ones that haven't been adopted yet. To the best of our understanding, there's no changes in this particular location. As there, you know, there's some significant changes in other areas of, of the towns and certainly around the, some of the finger lengths have changed, but we don't believe that there's, and it's far enough outside any proposed development here, but we don't anticipate any issues with floodplains.
Okay, yeah. You, you looked at it?
Yes.
Okay, anything else before we send them on their way to? You think you can have this revised plan done for our August thirteenth meeting?
I can have, yes, I, there may be some of the specific, let's say, engineering comments that we can work through with MRB, but I think I can have all of the things that I know the board is interested in, such as the landscaping and the phasing and, and those plans in your hands in order to come back here and that would be my intent.
Okay.
I mean, revising SWP calculations and things like that. I'll work through that with MRB and, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't think the SWP, that, that's more finals plan specific, I think.
Yeah, that, again, that would, that would be part of the finals for phase one. But yes, the answer to your question.
All right, well then let's, I think we have a continuation resolution.
We do. I've got to change one of the whereas is, it includes some of the language from last time, but as I understand what you're asking for, you want updated and what's happened to the phasing plan, some additional landscape plan details. And sort of that's, just you run some stock or easements for, just know them anywhere for utilities and.
Oh, yeah, there is my negotiation paperwork will be required at final approval for each phase.
Well, that's going to be on the conditions of approval whenever we get there.
No, no, finally eliminating the conditions.
Yeah, but we're not, we're continuing.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, you just reason, you're looking for reasons for continuation.
Right.
What we're looking for.
And then
Well, revised plan.
Right, yeah.
The genre.
Right up front.
So, you know, we'll continue to the thirteenth and ask that we have materials by the sixth.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to continue next, August thirteenth.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for the discussion. Board, your homework assignment is to look through the part one, or two, or three of the seeker. Board, your homework assignment is to look through the part one or two, part three of the seeker. Was when we take action on this application, we we have to do our our shtick with the going over each item. We can maybe abbreviate a little bit, but uh still it takes a little bit of time and it'd be nice if we looked at it at a time so we can. All right, I have a motion and a second to continue to the thirteenth of August. For discussions, if not, all in favor. Okay.
All right.
See you then.
It's an extra week.
Next, second item on the agenda is C P N twenty twenty four oh sixty six. Uh, Mr. Swedman's back uh with Anne Haggerty to discuss the revised landscape plan. Alice. You wanna come up and?
Yeah.
Tell us.
Uh, good evening, Dan Hackett. So, uh, I think it was July eleventh, we met with the environmental board. We sat down, went through things, we uh we started a meaningful meeting. I think we had gotten to an agreement on changing some things. Which uh the plan has been edited with the reflection of what we discussed at that meeting, we actually did a mock-up as we discussed with this board. And uh. One of the comments was that the planning board was looking for more trees, so at that time we added more trees. Explained about the pocketing coming across plus the existing trees. Um, and I think that the uh meeting minutes from the environmental committee reflected that they. As long, they wanted to look at the plan, I promised to have it tuned by the sixteenth, I think they have it and in the minutes, I haven't heard anything back, so I think we were at agreeance, so. The plant changes um. And the additions, so. The only other question that the board had asked when we were here last time. Uh, which I called Wendy Mahar, the engineer on. Was one comment was made about the segmental retaining wall detail, which she did add to the plan, it's a versatile on a segmental retaining wall. And it was a comment about just the gradient of the path. And the gradient of path was fourteen percent, which again is within the standards of a dog car and pedestrian. Um, I asked Wendy if she could please make a note of that on her drawings, which she did, but that fell within the uh desirable standards of our gradient. Um, other than that, not to go into each plant with the board unless you want me to, I would certainly throw it to the board and answer any questions.
Uh, no, and thank you and and thank you to the E C B for getting together and, because, you know. What was discussed was is out of our element. Uh, and you folks are certainly the professionals on that, both you and uh there's a lot of expertise in E C B. And I think the issue or the what seemed to be the contradiction at the last meeting was. You know, native versus non-native invasive, I think you were saying in some cases, Dan, that. Evasive may be required under certain conditions, whether it be along the road. Uh, yeah, and I I said, well, that's not an argument for us to make, you know, that's why it was back to the E C B. I assume that you came up with a. Agreement.
We we, yeah, we actually even discussed the plants that night, I told them what we would make the changes to. And that, and I said, you know, again, that'll all be reflected on a plan. And you know, it's interesting, just again, the question you asked, we, you know, invasive, what's invasive, what? There is a list of things that can't be planted, there are perspectives of what's, you know, invasive. You know, I was reminded that a spirea has a score of sixty-two out of a hundred. On an invasive level, I don't know what chart that comes from, there's a lot of different charts, and nor does that matter, okay? We were at sixty-two, that's fine, we can move forward from that, that plant has been changed. What I asked the uh environmental board, just so you're aware, is, you know, and I think I had said to this board at some point. With this, there should be some kind of matrix for scoring. And I think that, again, we got to a good agreement and that matrix was worked out. For this particular thing, but in the future to have something that can be quantifiably designed. And not a subjective, you know, it's it's this or it's that, it it doesn't go to a. Personality kind of thing of, so, and I understand your guideline, so I think it was a, it was a good meeting. Um, I'm glad I went to it, I hope that they were happy that I came to it and I, I mean, it appeared that they were happy with our resolution.
As you go through.
If you saw this, but this, you should have sent us this just yesterday. Okay. It was in the workspace, but I don't know if you were included on that. But it does mention like a couple changes, could I just read through, I guess?
I I think that's a labeling thing then, because the plant counts came right off and they're shown as deleted. So, again, let's scroll down.
Eric, was that the E C B notes you brought up?
Yeah, they've been, they've been deleted, so that's a notation on the drawing, so.
Seven twenty-two?
I guess, you know, if if there was an, if there's a notation on the drawing and it showed that it's deleted. That would be, that would need to be struck, but I would hope that the board would just say, okay, a conditional thing is that's erased from the drawing.
I'm sorry. I gave it to you so you had like, I mean, if I can follow along.
It says eleven Anthony worse by razor illustrated on the plan but not in the planting schedule. Because they got changed to, yes, all the spirea got removed and it went to. But then did plants, which here's the whole list and all the changes that's been captured, so. Um, that's a notation. Um, it's, nobody's trying to see something in.
Okay, we just put a condition, conditional on this E C B comment, that the planner flags as for them.
Right, seven twenty-two.
Were these notes now to?
They're in the work states.
What's that?
They're in the cloud.
I, okay, Wendy didn't tell me, or else I would have, I would have had it revised already, I just, I don't see the notes, so.
You can certainly make them as conditions.
It's a fun surprise. Kim, I I don't wanna put you in the spot, but is there anything else that? You have a concern about it? If if this. At least if these issues are addressed. That's, okay. And the other issue is warning and the guarantee and the surety, which we'll talk about this, okay? All right, anybody else have anything else on the site plan itself, let me just check. For you. Eric, I think the findings address. The wrong address. Yeah. Yeah, you have forty fifteen county.
Forty-one.
It should be forty-one and three. Proves I read the findings. Okay, chip a letter, I'm just going back through what we talked about last week and make sure again. Uh, so if you shed, that's one of the reasons we're spending so much time on the landscaping. Water height, you have the detail, which was an M R B request and it's shown. And I asked Eric about seven, condition seven. I mean, they already have, do they have a CFO? Other house?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, so then, this is. You can't get a CFO until it's done, so is that?
About a C O C certificate of compliance.
Yeah, that would be a little bit better wording. Which brings us down to the proposed number nine condition. I I think the concern the board has. Uh, is that these plants will be installed as shown. And they will be maintained and left in place as shown. And uh. I guess there's a couple of ways we can assure ourselves of that. One being that periodically it'd be inspected, make sure they're still there. And the other suggestion I thought of was, we are requesting a. Soil stabilization erosion control surety, so maybe we could include or have separate a landscape surety.
There's um, there's already an open nine thousand dollars that hasn't been closed out. The recommendation was to keep that open until this is completely done, so there's already money that the town has. Uh, for the land, for the erosion control.
Erosion control, okay. So then we possibly looking at landscape sure. But sure that.
So your suggestion is though that it kind of be rolled into.
Yeah, that's what the uh, the building inspector said, don't close it out, keep everything open, you know, don't close, because you're still. Pending uh, doing some some work, so if the town already has, I, or I could have closed it out.
I think the big thing for what we would need, like letting soil erosion, we need an estimate of, you know, the work basically to understand what the monetary value of that is. In this case, we don't have that yet for the landscaping, so we would need that to know that it covers that amount that we're talking about, right? Um.
But so the condition, there are gonna be two conditions, one. Is that a soil and erosion control in an amount approved by the town engineer or code enforcement officer. Will be supplied to the town, well, if it's nine thousand dollars, you've already satisfied that that condition. If it's nine thousand a month, if it's over nine thousand, you'll have to supplement the soil erosion. And then what Chuck is saying is, the landscape surety will be provided and amount to be approved by the town engineer or code enforcement officer.
What, what percentage is he assured?
Whatever's approved by the town engineer, I don't know.
A- again, you know, I'm just trying to simplify this and streamline it, you know. It just from experience, the soil erosion on this at this point. If it's nine thousand, I I I'm not writing the estimates, but. I'm on a lot of job sites, I see it all the time, it's it's probably thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred bucks for the sil棚s and to keep that maintained. During this process, the planting by itself, that a surety, if it's a percentage. Um, you're you're probably looking at, and I could itemize it right to the dollar, but you're probably looking at a forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollar job. Put this bill to get, put this back together with all these plants, so if, and that's just from experience on a project, if the board. You know, we can write that down and do a full estimate. Or if that number is a comfortability with the board and they said, hey, it's gonna be X percentage, just so Mr. Swetman knows and. You know, we're we're kind of just trying to streamline this through, so I, I I'm just trying to help expedite the process again because the site's ripped up. I know he wants to get going and. Um, that doesn't mean the board has great discretion, I understand that too, it's just more open discussion.
Would the landscape surety is it a percentage or is it usually with the cost of the improvements? Yeah, it's usually. Well, the other option is what you suggest is.
Uh, this is. E C B. For the one, three and five year inspections. And you know. The compliance enforcement of that, I guess, would be that it would be a violation of site plan approval and to. Remove them, not maintain them in their condition, I guess.
Uh, yeah, and again, I I don't think it would be a certificate, obviously it would be a certificate of compliance. So how's the board feel, I mean, would you, I wanna see a surety or would you wanna see a inspection period established to make sure that? The plants are there and still there.
Nine, condition is stated. Because that's an ongoing condition versus a one-time.
I I agree.
Which time you face. Huge. Daily or weekly, I forget, fines. Uh, of violating a condition of planning. It's very, I mean. Stuff's dying off, because there's a, you know, a virus or something. If it's intentional or if it's, you know, then it's a violation of code. You tell what tell it.
Okay. Then the only change that I would be is.
And then looking at again, do we need six?
Well, I probably should to see about.
Sure, they're staying from the original site plan.
Plus for. Why?
Yes.
Well, and they, I I think applied to the original.
Yeah.
Uh, that could maybe be. Discuss the shoreline guidelines, determine the additional, other than the improvements. So approved with this revision. Or warranted. It's the surety's in place, but we just have to make sure that it's enough to cover the soil erosion. Okay. Anything else? Do we have a? Oh, is anybody in the audience? Want to address the board regarding this application? For uh forty-one oh three on Linda? If not, I think we're ready, move on.
Can can I ask one?
Sure.
Question, because I know Jim's gonna ask me when we got aside, and I just wanna make sure I can answer correctly.
We'll help you.
If if the number was forty-five thousand, planting, and he has nine in the kitty already, the number came back at thirty-five hundred, four thousand. Right? That would be in that, you'd have forty-eight, five. As your total, less than nine thousand that he already is holding, so it would be forty thousand dollars. Because he already has nine as an assurance, those numbers may change, but just so I understand how you're doing your math.
Well, I think the way we resolved it is, there's no more money.
Oh, there's no more money, okay, great.
It's just.
Okay, this is if he asked me, that's how I would explain it.
It's an inspection of here, it'll be periodically inspected.
Okay, great.
Uh, after the first year, third year and fifth year.
And then you still want an estimate of the soil erosion.
Yeah.
For this particular development, which might then be less than the nine thousand you currently have.
And you can apply for release.
So there's already some sil棚s that's still there, and there's already a mitigation that's still there right now, that's why we're gonna do this. Um, you know, very carefully as far as, you know, how we do all this stuff, so if you get out there and look, there's a, there is black. What do you call it? It's already there, just a reading.
That's, that's why I think, Jim, that number's gonna be lower if you want me to do it, so. And Jim, you could in good faith with them, if you're not worried about it, say let the nine rise until I'm down. You let it ride this long, why not, so.
But you can, I mean, you guys can also apply for release if the numbers are.
Okay.
The town has no interest in holding more money than it needs.
Okay, so uh, do I have, uh, see, we got a seeker type two. Uh, we have a site revised site plan. Someone wanna take care of both?
Cheryl, we'll still bring the seeker. Back to for C P N twenty-four oh six-six, forty-one oh three on Linda Drive. And we're bundling it with the single stage site. Eric with eight.
We have nine, condition nine, we moved what was noted as number six, and then obviously renumbered the other ones. Changing references to occupancy or simply as a client. Uh, we're adding to uh, what's noted as condition eight, but we're not at condition seven. Uh, no additional improvements other than those shown in site plan. And then a new condition, uh, that the landscaping plan has to be revised to reflect E C D comment letter dated July twenty-second.
In the words occupancy will be changed to compliance intuitive.
Thank you, so the revised the plan to. Live by with the E C B's comments, yes.
And you confused me with dates of your plans, I was, I'm trying to, we usually like to tie down a date and reference it in our first whereas. What is the date? And work for them in our first whereas, what is the date, the latest plan?
It's in, I think, the third or fourth one down, July twenty.
I think Mahar's submitted July sixteen.
I think Mahar's submitted on the sixteenth. So that the plan that was submitted at five twelve, I did it on a Sunday, we met on a Thursday, I did it on a Sunday. You know, in the afternoon and got it sent out. I think that's why I had the two things I raised. We were trying to stay in front of you guys.
So then Mahar is the cover site. And the landscape plan dance, landscape plan would be a supplemental plan.
Right. So that's why we have that on other note, all of the relevant information submitted is up to July twenty. But I know that you'd like to have the plans date noted in that one. And the way it had been revised here is that sort of like the original approval was sort of known in the first one, and then kind of notes the history of it leading into. What would usually be the introductory whereas.
Okay, as long as we know which plan. That the ECB and. I heard came up with. And they're all in agreement on that plan. And then the hard plan is the plan that. involves the uh walk walkway and the retainable. Okay. So. I got a motion a second. Uh for discussion. If not, just leave it paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
And again, I appreciate your cooperation, working with the ECB on this.
No, it worked out great. Thank you.
Made our job easier. Maybe not. Uh, okay, we're moving on to. Get ready, Matt. CPM twenty twenty four oh sixty nine. A subdivision. At fifty one forty Wifel's Road. Uh, I will, it's a subdivision of two point six nine acres with two lots. One being the one point five three one acres, the other being one point one. Five nine acres in the R thirty, one thirty district. I will now open the public hearing, introduce Mr. Baker. Good evening.
Hello. So yeah, we're looking to subdivide that lot. When the uh when my grandparents were gonna buy that lot back early two thousands, they were looking for a little bit of elbow room. Um, so they had a double lot that they bought there. Um, their house was the first one built on that section of Whiteless Road. Uh, but now the times come to um. Looking to sell the property at some point, uh the home included, uh but we'll subdivide that lot out separately.
Seems uh pretty. Cut and dry. Area up there that bumped out, cut out. Interesting to read it. There's the history, what it's all about.
Yeah, it's uh this is back a couple of years after my grandparents bought the lot and built the built their house there. There was a. Property boundary dispute from a. Adjacent property over on Lower Lane.
Indians.
It was an adverse possession kind of situation.
There.
Yeah. So they had had their shed there and had been mowing it. Even though the property line was well on their side, they they made a claim against it and. Lawyers got involved and that's what.
So that's part of their law, not part of your law. So it is a.
Yeah.
Second year law school and first year law school, second. The professor told a hundred law school students about adverse possession. We're all about twenty five years old. Every single one of us went, no.
Yeah, my grandparents being uh lifelong farmers, boundaries are important to them and.
Sure.
They they kind of fought it, but uh didn't get their way.
A uh. ECB had no comments on it. The county planning board found it to be exempt from any review of theirs. Jim Fletcher had something about access to whatever. It was nothing. Any issue? And I assume we'll uh. Be talking to the future owners the next month, right?
I guess.
Okay, and they are here to see me. Trying to move this thing as quickly as possible, see in your house people with snowflakes. Anybody from the board have any? Thing to add on the subdivision? You'll see the site plan. Next month. If not? Uh, I will open it up to the public, since this is a public hearing. Anybody? On the virtual land, have any questions, concerns, issues regarding this application? Okay, if not. I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to uh. Reviewing the seeker, which is unlisted in this case because it is a subdivision. And does anyone have any issues with the seeker resolution as prepared? Looking at the revision date, plans. It's neat on that. Plan, uh can you? I've got six seventeen, you're right there. Oh, there it is. Six seventeen? All right. So Eric, if you want to make that sixth plan, place revise six seventeen. On both the seeker and the subdivision resolution. Okay, so maybe give me a motion on the unlisted action for seeker.
For seeker resolution, unlisted action for twenty four zero six nine.
I'll second.
Okay, mission second. I don't think there's any further discussion. We see the part twos and part threes prepared by. MRB. Our behalf. So all in favor?
I I.
Because I will sign them. And we'll move on to the subdivision. Will you want to make a motion?
I'll do the single stage subdivision for twenty four zero six nine. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
I thought there was more to say, but it was really not, so.
I would recommend in addition to your findings that uh. The findings. Uh usually set forth for payment of a fee in lieu of parkland. Be added to your findings, Lance and Eric have the standard one you always do.
Yep, there's a condition.
Included the condition of it, but that has to be backed up by a standard finding.
Oh, yes. That'll. That'll come up again with the site plan. But. Felt the suspenders. Okay, anything else regarding the subdivision resolution? You okay, Chris? Where'd you go?
Sir.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Sure.
See you next month. I close it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks for coming out.
Motion in second of the seeker.
I did. I have a seeker motion.
I did.
Same same. I like that. That's smart. Even if we're doing it separately, it's still, you don't have to.
Okay. All right, item number four, CPN twenty twenty four oh fifty five, Gerber Homes. Uh, rep uh looking at a property at forty four sixty eight County Route sixteen. I think this is affectionately a lot three of the. Subdivision out there. The Hollander subdivision, I believe. And it's a new site plan for the construction of a single family home. Uh, including a on-site wastewater system. I'll make a lot in the R one thirty. And let's see, we have quite a contingent online. Uh, gentlemen, one of you want to introduce the project?
Hi, John, Graciozy at Gerber Homes. Unfortunately, Scott couldn't join us this evening, but um just a quick summary on top of what you just said. This is part of an originally approved. For a lot subdivision that was approved in um two thousand and four. And Gerber Homes has been the builder of the other two existing homes that are in there, as well as the builder of the of lot two, which we received planning board approval. Maybe last month or the month prior. Um, so this is the fourth and final site in the subdivision. We were asked as part of this application to upload the driveway agreement, which we have done that. It is a CPS seven de minimis HOA. Approved by the Attorney General. And that's been in place, you know, from the beginning. Um, we have this house sighted and placed uh to minimize the footprint within the steeper slopes. Um, the portion that extends in the highlighted area is about fifteen point five percent. In the steep slope area, which is just above the fifteen percent threshold. The lot utilities will be extended from Westlake Road like they were on the other three sites. Um, it does have uh water, electric, gas, and we will have a uh conventional septic system. Site drainage was designed as part of the overall driveway construction to minimize any DOT problems along Westlake Road. And we have not had any issues with the DOT and and throughout the development of the property. So everything is working up until now. Um, all four lots are active. Under the NOI for the New York State DEC, and the NOI serves as the construction stormwater permit. Um, we have received comments back from the town engineer and the code enforcement officer. Uh, we have made some changes and adjustments to this plan that are uh that is in front of you, and we've also sent back written comments. Um, to the town slash town engineer on the comments. I think most of the comments were more technical in nature than they were. Um, substantial to the uh project itself, but I'm here to answer any questions that I can.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I guess it's same old, same old uh with the other lots. So you're going through uh Taylor Holley for the septic system. Uh, how are you making out with that, John?
Um, I know Scott has it has submitted it to him. I don't know if he's gotten, you know, final feedback from him. Um, I did have a note here in the comment response back to MRB. He addressed that and said. Excuse me just a moment. We have forwarded copies of the lot three site plan to the Canadian watershed inspector for comments. The septic system design data per test results noted on the plan were witnessed by the Canadian watershed inspector. So that's where that is at.
And we got. We got that covered with condition number four. Resolution with the Tyler. Is there any type of uh stormwater detention? As part of this house or this property?
Or um Scott?
Go ahead, John.
Um, so there was a note that Scott had um addressed here that said that the. Let's see. Yeah, we have added rip rap outlet protection to the downstream side of the driveway culvert as requested. And uh we've had additional rotation to the site plan to verify the proposed grades. And uh let's see, we've added a site plan requiring that areas greater than one and three will be treated with erosion control blank. Blanket and suitable seed mix as required. We've added a note about the culvert detail and stone outlet protection, as well as the concrete washout. And silt fences added to the configuration and that the downspouts were directed. To the north to the existing drainage. Um, that's been established there as part of the original uh site, original site development driveway plan. If that answers the question or not.
Uh, yeah, I I think the ECB had a concern and I think it's, you know, the general concern is. Water coming off that hill. Uh, I know, I know uh Scott did a lot of work down al- along uh County Route sixteen, Westlake Road. Uh, to mitigate some stormwater issues that were there prior to the uh. Opening up this site. So we just want to make sure that we're not causing a problem on. County Route sixteen, but it's county does not appreciate that. And I think we're obligated to the county to make sure that we don't contribute to. Any any issues that. Already exists. Though I, as I said, I think Scott took care of some of the issues that were there. Prior to groundly and broken out there.
Yeah, we we did cut off all of the drainage coming from the north and a high side swell and some catch basins and some. Um, drainage ditches that have jack dams in it, and then we brought that all around and bypassed the um. The uh, the pipe that goes under County Road sixteen to the south, because that's where they were having some drainage issues. So we've. Routed the water around that to avoid that issue and it's worked well.
John, if I may, it's about. Um, I note on your plans, the driveways. Uh, but there's no type of surface. What type of surface is that going to be?
It will be paved blacktop.
Okay, we make sure that goes on the plan, please.
Yes.
Also, I note that your architectural plan notes, it says that. Your building height is twenty five feet above FF first floor. Uh, but did you not use an average? Topo before to figure out what the total height the house would be?
Um, I'd have to defer that back to Scott. Um, I'm not sure how he calculated or what he calculated. It's a one. It's a one-story home, so we don't have a two-story home, so we have a walkout basement and then a a typical nine-foot first floor. And then your your typical roof, so we're definitely not exceeding any height requirements there.
Right, but on on this slope, you should be using your average of the points of the house. Uh, and that average plus twenty five should give you the height of the roof. I I tried to figure out from your as build plans or your build plans that are not for construction there, but uh it seems. That there may be an issue with the height total. So I would please look at the the code and see what the average height. Uh, the your building, it was starting point of your building would be.
Okay, yeah, I can go over that with Scott and he can calculate that and submit that with the, is that part of the building permit process?
Asked me, I don't know.
It will be for sure. I I think should also be shown on this plan. We have a determined and shown.
Okay, I will have Scott add that to the plan, but the average height of the building is above. The or the the height of the building above, we could take into consideration the average grade around the building.
Right, so your average should be your starting point, not the FF. Above first floor. So the average plus twenty five. Feet, your house shouldn't exceed that.
Okay.
The plan very poorly, Joe.
Private, but I think Bob was asking about the drive. Like the.
All these different topos.
We're talking about the driveway now, your first question.
Oh, oh, that's the standard driveway.
Yep. I think.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Can we do uh comments from additional comments from the county highway department, the public works department? Regarding the. Westlake roots, that's good. MRB, was there, I didn't, I didn't. Anything in there? Should point out, no, I didn't, I didn't reclam. Didn't note anything. I mentioned the ECB of. Well, the controlling LC. Stormwater and we we talked about that. Uh, it is in the city view shed that we, I think we feel is adequate. Uh, offering their trees and vegetation to uh. Uh offering their trees and vegetation to uh similar, I guess, to what lot two has. To take care of that. A committee uh did not feel there's any loss of ag land as a result of this. Enrollment. Anything else for? I'll open it up to the public, anybody uh in the audience. Address the board regarding this application. If not. Let's move on. So we have a secret type two. And a single-stage site plan. I think we can handle both together if somebody wants to take care of that. Crickets.
Did we have anything?
I didn't, eleven.
I didn't add a numbered condition. I just added to condition nine where it says the cyclines are de-arrived to identify the height of the house. And I added to that set and driveway surface material.
Is there one missing about the. Stabilization of the lawn prior to CFO? I'm missing this one. Standard note?
The standard note that we just started.
Remember the note, Eric?
Yeah, it's okay.
And and at the. Kim, do you wanna just scroll up to see what the revision dates up in the upper right there? Yeah, I'm making Eric a week's money. Uh what's that date? Is that the latest plan?
I have five five.
Five five.
Five five? Okay, so good. So uh did I get a motion? I'm sorry. Are we trying to come up with conditions?
Uh bundle CPN twenty-four oh five five, four four six eight, County Route sixteen, secret type two. And the single-stage site plan, and now I think we have twelve.
Okay.
I'll I'll take a second, but I'd also like to make sure that number nine says. That the house height is identified by the average as per the town code. Average total.
On cycline to re-arrive to identify the height of the house by average finished grade.
Right, have the average finish.
Okay. Any uh further additions, corrections to the conditions? Now the uh motion stands as stated. Motion seconded, don't favor. Okay, thanks, John.
All right, yeah, thank you very much. Sorry Scott couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Uh we'll hold against it.
Take care.
All right. Last on our formal agenda. I have number five is CPN twenty twenty-four oh sixty-eight. Uh Western. Western, are you Jim?
I'm not Jim.
Oh, you're not Jim, okay.
Jim's online.
Jim's online, all right. And you are?
Uh my name is Joshua Simpson, civil engineer.
These folks are here to see me to discuss a sketch plan review under the Form Based Code. And uh that being said. This will also be the subject of a ZBA hearing tomorrow night. Uh regarding a number of variances which. We found in the Form Based Code developed, uh trying to implement the code. To existing properties, but uh. You'd like to tell us what you have in mind out there on. Three thirty-two, uh you want to expand the parking lot and. Maybe give us a little more details, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Um as stated, um kind of showing the plans here. Uh proposed development is to expand the parking capabilities of the existing Honda dealership on three thirty-two. Um running just parking issues um with existing vehicles on site. Um getting growth and everything, you know, stamping of the existing park facilities. Uh being requested to provide that for the dealership. Uh it's shown on the plan, uh proposed parking expansion will connect to the existing lot. Uh via drive-by to the south um with, you know, various display storage spaces. Being present here, kind of on the northwestern corner of Emerson three thirty-two. Um we've gone through uh some changes to the to the plan from when it was originally conceived last year. Um given the Form Based Code, there's a lot of uh restrictions for specifically this type of expansion. So one effort we made was adding in, you know, I'd say some more green space than what you typically see on a car dealership, display lot. Um with some of the aisles um with the center island being, you know, grass. Uh and some of the spots being kind of broken up with some of the grass spaces, uh to break up maybe the the sea of asphalt that. Sometimes you typically see on on dealership lots. As far as kind of other site developments go, uh there isn't. I'd say much else other than than this peanut block. Obviously, some grading, erosion control. Um grade generally goes from, you know, northwest, northern to the south. Um kind of to the the wetland area to the east of of this lot, um to some solar infrastructure. Uh north of the existing dealership. Um the the wetlands uh will be protected with erosion control bench and orange construction fence to make sure they're not disturbed during construction. As far as no utilities, you know, sanitary water needed, but we are doing uh some stormwater. Catch basin inlet. Um kind of in the the southeastern corner to collect some runoff from the lot. Um as well as swelling uh along kind of the eastern side, north of the wetland. Uh to control some of the the runoff leaving the lots. And then as far as landscaping goes, um we are adding trees and incoals of a lot as you imagine. Um with mainly some larger trees around the perimeter of the lot. And then the interior lot having some trees and shrubs to. Kind of accent and try to mitigate some of the heat island effect you get. Especially the the parking lot of a size, so. They're here for sketch review. Um and as stated, be back here tomorrow for zoning board for the. The variances needed for this lot, so here to kind of get any initial feedback, comments that this board may have.
You want to go over the variances to the church seeking tomorrow night?
Yeah, so there's six in total. Um so. I guess, you wanna go through each one or just the general?
Yeah, for the benefit of the board, uh yeah, each each uh one that you're contrast to the Form Based Code.
So uh one being um like one of the main ones is parking in front of buildings, disposed behind. Um you know, given, you know, this existing quarter of the existing building. Um what's in the rear of this building, I'm not not really a uh a means of expansion for. For that to have in the rear and given that there's already existing uh parking in this front area. Um you know, that's why we're spanning along that frontage to kind of maintain that. Um landscaping being ten percent, that was one of the ones that uh we made an effort to increase, you know. Before it was, you know, mainly all asphalt bedding, the grass islands um and the. Spaces that'll kind of break up some of the the rows of parking into grass islands. Um as well as adding landscaping throughout that, we're at about eighty percent now. Um that one part from the uh conservation board, seeing if we could get it to that ten percent. Um so we wouldn't need that variance, that's something we're looking to. The parking lot with exceeding thirty percent of the property width, this is mainly due to. In the Form Based Code on the side lot, so. Intended in the Form Based Code, you know, having the buildings along the frontage, if there are these side parking lots, they don't want them to be. More than thirty foot wide of the um the property width. Um technically, this is a side parking lot because the building will be, you know, facing three thirty-two with the lot to the side. Um so we are, you know, taking up a lot of that width uh for this parcel. Next, massing and orientation. Trying to remember which one specifically that was, I know. Space specification, that's for double parking. Um so sometimes you see, you see that a lot on new car dealership, display lots, storage lots. You know, double double parking cars to kind of condense the the parking spaces, that was one Form Based Code. You know, variance we need, pedestrian routes, which is the internal parking lots. Um given that the intent of a lot of the Form Based Code. You know, buildings was this that have businesses, offices, things of that nature, which you would obviously want to have internal pedestrians in those parking lots. Uh make sure they're safe routes for people to walk around. Uh this is a unique case, given it is a car dealership. You know, it's right on a car lot, usually you're walking around the lot looking at cars. Sellers are are walking in around the lot looking at cars, moving them um around to the front and various spaces. So that's the variance and then the massing orientation that was not having more than fifty spots per lot. Um kind of breaking them up, so it's not, you know, large areas of parking. Once again, kind of similar to the other variances, um given it's kind of a unique, unique use of the car dealership. Um in this area, you know, trying to condense the spots. Into one spot and the parking required to. Alleviate some of the the parking concerns that the dealership currently has, it's kind of the need for the amount of spaces, so. So it's, it's, it's all, so these are our variances and.
You've got quite a hurdle.
Yeah.
Uh you know, the board. We'll, you know, we certainly are concerned about Form Based Code in terms of its implementation. We know there sometimes, especially the car dealership. Uh it's, it's not a a good, good marriage in terms of trying to get. That type of use conform to the Form Based Code, but. Well, we'd sure like to see as much as possible, there are attempts to be done and. You know, I I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I feel. Uh a lot more work could have been done on your part to try to meet more. More of the aspects of the code, excuse me. Uh and I'm, I'm I'm seeing it from various review committees that have looked at this. So far and uh including the county planning board, ECB. And I I think. At least I'm echoing what they're saying that the, I think more work should be done in terms of. Coming up with a better plan, because I think it's just a. It's it's an effort on your part to have it comply with what you need. But I don't think it meets what town needs or what the town wants. Uh I do have a question on the wetlands, and I mentioned this to you and Lance. Eric, uh how sacred are these wetlands? I mean, they're not national wetlands, right? Federal ones. Or are they?
Say there'd be a hundred foot.
Okay. So but the fact that they're federal wetlands. Not that that makes it easier, but uh I. I I think the biggest issue I have is is just having those these display cars out front. So close to the road and if we can move that whole operation, I mean.
Would you s- would you still run into the issue from Emerson, like? You know, is it still considered within that front yard?
But I I your front, your front yard is three thirty-two. It's a corner lot. It's a lot that I guess uh the owner purchased, and that was a separate lot of time, right?
Right, and that's also a process of this. Lot line adjustment. So I think even if we were to put on Emerson, I think. A a number of the variances are unavoidable, you know, along the frontage, like you said, if. Given just the way the existing business and. Um you know, way lots oriented, you know, parking would be along the frontage. Um you know, the amount for space, you know, that's something that could be looked at. Um landscaping, like I said, we're working in an effort to um try and get maybe in that ten percent to to add more. But you know, the width um you know, basically would be thirty percent from property lineup would be the amount and. A lot of the, you know, the variances would, you know, limit the amount of spaces that the dealership. Is requesting and needs to, you know, maintain the version, so or to increase the.
Excuse me, can you guys hear me? This is Jamalka, the director of facilities.
Yes, sir.
For Western, yes, hi, yeah, I'd like to maybe comment on that too. Do and and we've been very fortunate, we purchased this from Victory Honda a couple of years ago. And with that, you know, we've increased the service and sales capacity at this location, you know, by, you know, fifty percent. And the unfortunate aspect of it is. And we're overparked currently, so we need to do something. Uh we do own this land next to us and I I I can. Understand the direction that the town is looking to go for development. Um but I guess I also would like to point out the reality of. You know, this stretch is car dealerships um and it's probably going to maintain that. Look and feel for quite some time. Um you know. We need to have parking here and I, you know. So that I guess the trade-off is, do you want a look and feel that you want on the street, or do you want me to impact a bunch of wetlands? And spend, you know, probably three to four times as much to try and do that um and lengthen our time. Um it's just, it's from a business perspective and I I. I get that you have an appearance that you're trying to change to, it's just not what it is today. Um and I I it. The reality is our business, the way it is, is, you know, I need that that extra storage. Um and there really isn't anywhere else to put it. Um so I I think it's. With the current conditions and what we already have there. I do feel that this is a a middle ground solution is adding a lot more islands in there that we would normally want to do. Um you know, and we're not developing the entire site, we are not touching a a bunch of federal wetlands. Um you know, and trying to upset the, you know, the ecosystem of that area. Um you know, I I think we're doing a really, you know. Balancing act of trying to get it to work in between. I get that we're never gonna get to exactly everything you want. Because I have to have cars between the building and the the road, it's just the nature of what we do. Um and it's already set up that way, so. I I I guess I would respectfully like you guys to think about that. Um and understand the way we operate and the way. You know, there's probably ten other dealers right in that same area that are operating this exact same way.
Understood, understood.
I think a lot of the, I think tomorrow also lead a lot of discussion on, you know. If some of those variances, if is there any, anything that can be done to mitigate them? You know, get rid of some of them, like I said, I think most realistic maybe is the landscaping adding in. You know, cut cut more trees or um you're making a little bit more green space. But kind of just saying, you know, the frontage and the amount and everything, you know, giving what's giving what's needed. Some of the variances, but.
This log will primarily be for display, I guess. New cars, it's not for storage. Treat-ins and.
Oh, no, no, this is a, this is new and used car vehicle display for sales only. The that's, because right now that's overflowing into where we put service and employees. I mean, we have uh almost fifty employees at this location that I gotta park every single day, not to mention the customers. You know, we uh I forget the exact numbers, I mean, our repair orders. Uh, I forget the exact numbers, I, I mean, our repair orders. Um, Josh, you have those in front of you, I, I sent those to you today, it was.
Yeah.
Eighty, sixty, sixty or seventy repair orders a day that are coming through there as well. It's just, there's a lot of cars that come through and I need to be able to put them somewhere. And I know there's talks about, you know, remote lots and stuff like that, then you're just putting more traffic on your streets. Causing more situations for, you know, accidents and that for our, my employees. Other, you know, community people, and I just, it makes a lot more sense if we can have everything connected in, in one place.
Appreciate you mentioning the ro- remote lots. What sorts of alternatives did you consider beyond building a new lot?
Oh, we looked at several lots along this location, one on the other side of our Mazda, um, but that was gonna run into the same situation as this form base code. And I know there was a few others along this whole strip that we were looking at as well, but most of them fell. In that same way, I know Mazda, we, we liked the one next to our Mazda store. But we felt that that one had larger hurdles to overcome. Uh, based on it's, it's already a much smaller location.
So. Prior to the board considering, this board or the zoning board considering. Uh, actually, you're rendering a decision on your application, it's going to have to submit in accordance with our town code. Uh, map showing all holdings, I think it's within. Uh, a certain radius, but it includes any adjacent holdings. Glancing it, so, and, and I don't see that, maybe that's in here somewhere, but I'm just looking through now. It looks like you. I don't know what, I've never seen a site plan that doesn't have a whole lot in it. Uh, unless it's matched to another thing. It looks like there's one on page one that shows some of this parcel. Uh, if you go up to page one, please. Um, I don't know if that's the property border or not. Um, you definitely need to show a site plan that shows your entire parcel. And then you'd also need to show, uh, adj- all. Uh, adjacent property holdings. Uh, before any boards can render a decision. And I suggest, if you, I mean, if you wanted to have that, the zoning board. You know, just looking at it, but it looks like you're behind the Mazda building, there's another building and then. Little parking and then some. An area that looks remarkably the exact same size as the parking lot you're proposing on three thirty two. Could go at the end of that long driveway from Emerson, I don't know if that's true. But you may want to be prepared to address that, because that's my guess, is you're gonna get asked that question, it's only for. So can't you put the parking lot right there?
Again, if you, if you drive through these areas, those spots are all, we're, they're all full. We're, we're jam packed and I don't want to start parking in fire lanes and everything else. Which I already yell at, down at our Toyota store. Uh, to make sure they keep everything clear.
I don't think anybody's parking, nobody's parking in the trees right now. I'll show, you want to just see, I'm just looking, so, Jim, I'm looking at it on my iPad, which is why, you know, you can't see it.
Okay. Yeah, we don't own behind us. I don't know.
No, sorry. This lot right here, it's owned by WAG Properties Three LLC. This, see that little square right there?
Yeah, so that. Is that the one with the? Uh, there's the building behind Mazda?
Yeah.
Yeah, so all of our detail operations and vehicle accessories are done out of that location for Mazda and Honda.
Perfect. Right behind that, you've got. You know, like. The exact same amount of space as you need for the parking lot. So you could put that parking lot right there.
Where do we could?
Not behind, I guess, I'd say to the east. Like on fifty three thirteen. See right where the cursor is?
But isn't that all wetlands as well? That's all, that's, that's all wetlands as well.
I'd, I'd be prepared to show the plan, the zoning board. Because I, my guess is they'll ask you that question.
Josh, did you ever think about? Mail to your plan right now, but instead of this, a rectangle. Kind of cutting a rectangle and path north to south there, and then going to the right. And then leaving a lot of green space between three, three, two. That's kind of like a compromise, but.
Westernmost.
Right, cut off that westernmost and then bring it over there. It's kind of a compromise, but. I want to think.
You're good, let's see if the geometry can change.
Is that, is that location plan correct that? You have that green area in front of your existing building, or is it?
It's the, so I think the aerial is, is out of date, so we can kind of see the darker lines. That's the extent of the existing parking, so.
Okay.
Or it's not, it's not limited to that in going, it's, we're actually slightly behind where the existing. Parking goes to on, on three thirty two.
It's the town of Greece anyway. Right, but the green area is parking now. That is parking now, and so is that.
Yeah.
I only know that might, or my wife's car here.
I would also think, and I.
Thank you for that.
I would also suspect that you will be asked at the zoning board. For details on, on, I guess, who's parking there, is that inventory? Is that staff, is that customers, is that? Repair, or a little bit of both, I don't know if it matters, but I, I would guess that you're gonna be asked that question. I guess, since you're gonna park inventory there, because.
It's, it's inventory and, uh. Like I said, we've, we're very fortunate, I mean, we're selling a hundred and thirty new and used cars there every month. Um, so we're rotating stock in and out, so. We definitely need that space for the new and used vehicle inventory.
What's that square above the wetlands?
It's an existing laptop there.
I mean. You could be moving the problem from. Thirty, three thirty two to Emerson, if you take the thing and turn it ninety degrees. Then you're getting further away from the existing parking area. You know, I'd rather have. That kind of exposure on Emerson than have a buffer on three thirty two or setback. That would need, you, you need some sort of aisle to get from the one parking lot to the other. Could be setting it up for the future for. Form base also, having that big buffer. In front.
Yeah.
But still allowing a car dealership.
Well, I think, in our meeting with town board and everything, we were trying to. Discuss how you adopt. The form base to existing properties, specifically car dealerships, and I think it was agreed that it's a give and take situation. That you, you're not gonna, you know, logically turn it into a form base code layout overnight, it's gonna be. You know, give and take, try to work things, uh, try to move things a little bit, you know. Try to implement some of the regulations that are in the code, but at the same time realize and respect what the, uh. The owner of the property and the. It's trying to do, in this case, sell cars. They want cars to be seen. So I, I think that's, that's what we're trying to do here. How it gets done.
Remember, nerd.
It's not easy.
Yeah, the first, I think, planning commission for PRC. Can be brought up, or, I, I'll confirm, but we're asking, you know, is this the first kind of. Dealership expansion with the form base code, and they said they believe it was, so I think it is a lot of.
To this extreme, yeah, yeah, we had a smaller, yeah, we had a smaller.
So, yeah, there was one smaller one, they were, I think they were, uh. Just bumbling out their entry.
Their building.
Just adorable. And then a few of your, you know, uh, colleagues slash competitors have come to the town staff and said, hey, we wanna. Do, well, exactly this plan that you're setting, and, and staff is. Spirit slash, slash, slab, offered alternatives. And, you know, to, to give them the path that you guys chosen to look at, go to the zoning boards. The zoning board has denied most variances under form base code. One thing I told another car dealership. And they're, I think they're working on plans for it is, and the contemplation under form base code. A theoretical contemplation is, you want a car dealership in form base code to be compliant. Build a, a glass showroom, you have it, you can make it four stories if you want, right along the road and put your parking behind it. That's not your current model, that's not what you're doing. You know. Elsewhere at these two dealerships. But the form base code would let you build, you know, a greenhouse essentially, for lack of a better phrase. Along that left side of the parking lot, and then have the rest of the parcel be parking. That would also quite frankly be visible from three thirty two. Make a one story. You know, that's what the theory is for form base code, that's what our. Birdman, uh, associates, the consultants who just set up our form base, but that's where they pointed the last car dealership.
I, I hope you, I hope you can appreciate the cost difference between a parking lot and a glass tower. It's, that's just not cost feasible.
Is, is the evolution or the way of purchasing cars changing in terms of? The number of new cars, new vehicles that you keep on the lot? Or is it? I mean, I, I know in, in my, you know, I, I've, I've been around for, I bought a couple of cars, and it's always nice to go out. And see the car on the lot, and say, that's the car I'm gonna buy, you can drive it. But I guess, it, uh, then I also hear that the, the whole. Process is evolving to a point that people come in, they order, order online, they don't even come into the dealerships. And they make your orders and they have their car delivered to them in front of their house. So, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, is there a chance or an opportunity or a potential that there'll be fewer cars? New cars on lots in the future?
So we came through COVID and we kind of all expected. Um, because you couldn't get a new car, uh, everything had to be ordered. I think the expectation was that that was going to maintain that way. You know, and that ordering would become the new kind of, of m- model. Uh, but as we've come out of that, and we've got, you know, a little bit more bandwidth. Um, you know, we are finding that people still like to come in and kick the tire and drive, drive the car. Uh, the supplies are back up to, you know, where they've been before, or they're able to, you know, produce them like they used to be able to do. Uh, so it, you know, we kind of saw a dip there for quite some time. Um, but I can definitely tell you our location. As, you know, or all of our locations for that matter. Are seeing the inventories, you know, back up high and people, you know, still liking to come in. We do, we, we have an express delivery, you can do it completely online if you'd like, there's a small percentage of people that do that. But that, you know, like I said, a lot of people like to come in and kick those tires. And I looked this morning right now, I've got a hundred and thirty newer used cars sitting on that lot. And essentially a hundred and ninety parking spaces, so it's, um. I'm sorry, what, what, what was that question?
Does New York State prohibit direct to consumer sales for new vehicles?
Except for in the city, correct? Yeah, to go through a dealer, New York City, you're allowed, like Tesla's model, where you can do. Uh, direct sales, that's, uh, New York City allows that, um, it has not passed the New York State by.
Well. This is a sketchpad review, we're just, you know, convincing here, and, um, I think. You have an idea what some of this board's concerns are, you're gonna certainly hear from ZVA tomorrow night. If you're successful at ZVA, uh, you will be back in front of us with a site plan at some point. Uh, I, I, you know, I just. Probably want to send you on your way, say that we'd like to look at some more give and take here. And I, we realize that you, to, to be in strict compliance. With the form base code is very difficult. But on the other hand, there's certain things that you can do to, I think. Have it more than just a. Typical. Uh, car dealership, and I, I think you could be the innovators.
Right.
In this, and sort of set the precedent, uh, and there, there is a precedent setting here, and. You know, what applies here will probably apply to other, uh, dealerships along three thirty two, as they want to do more or less the same thing you want to do. So. We certainly appreciate your, your business and your. Your sales tax that you contribute to the town, but, uh, in the same regard, I think we're trying to establish a. Better lifestyle and look out there, and if you can work with us on that, we'd appreciate.
Chuck, I apologize, Jim. You said you've got a hundred and thirty cars and a hundred and ninety parking spots?
He said fifty employees also.
Yeah. And you're. You're adding how many spots?
Nine.
Another ninety. Is it, you're in anticipation that you're gonna? Fill. You know, almost ninety slots with new co- new and used inventory?
And also. Is maintenance.
Yeah, don't forget about our maintenance, and then just plus the customers, you figure it's every, you know, three or four customers that come onto the lot are actually purchasing a vehicle. Um, so you know, you've, you've got more customers than you may actually sell a product. But yeah, I mean, this.
How much inventory are you looking to add here that you wouldn't be able to with? Out of this parking? Or inventory and, and repair business that you're missing out on?
So I, that, that's a tough question to predict, uh, you know, how far we can actually take this. Uh, Honda is a great brand, you know, we've had great success down in that market. Like I said, we currently are, we're doing a hundred and thirty a month. I know there are plans to get that to a one sixty, one seventy five. You know, so that means just that many more in there, so. This plan does plan for a little bit of that growth. Um, but you know, I could see in the next three to four years that, yes, we are maxed out.
Thanks.
Josh, less exciting, but still very important is, of stone water management, you're creating a lot more impervious surface here. And I'm just looking at your gradient facility plan, you've got a couple of catch bases in the corner. What, what, what do you have currently out there in terms of? Where your runoff from the existing facility runs and how would adding this, uh, this additional impervious? Contribute to that in terms of, and I guess I'm heading toward MRV and in terms of, uh. Swift or some sort of, uh. calculation to, uh. Address the stone water management?
Yeah, the, uh, disturbance doesn't trigger a slip, it's a sudden acre, but, um.
Okay.
And then kind of the plan for this is, you know, she drained down, collecting by some of those catch reasons and going into the existing. Um, so much facility, um, that's cer- certainly something we can provide is, you know, an analysis.
What's the capacity, current capacity of the existing system?
I think, I think so, we need supply.
This is part of three thirty two drainage district, so ultimately goes to repair and part.
Okay.
Looking at me? I, I was looking at you, I, I thought that, that was the case, right?
Yeah. There would have to be some, you know, analysis of the existing, um. There would have to be some, you know, analysis of the existing, um. Confering the existing storm structure, I think that's something when we get into the full set plan, providing more robust stormwater analysis of. You know, existing, existing capacity, you know, pipe size and things of that nature, uh, confirmed, you know, the overload of the system, but. That's something we can supply.
Okay, well, that's certainly a comment to coming out of this, we would be a concern. And I was saying landscaping, lighting. Making sure you're addressing as much as you can to form base code in terms of. What you require. Kristen, do you have anything? I know you did extensive. T L D O.
I don't, and I think you've covered, you know, the explanation for all the variances, um.
Anything else for the, for the group? All right, well, good luck tomorrow night. Maybe we'll see back with the current plan or? We, we think some revisions are in work, so we look forward to it. See now, okay, thanks, Josh.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, uh. Take care of the official business, uh, can I approve the minutes from the last meeting? Reed, you had the data that's not on here.
Yes.
Uh, okay, got a motion second. Any further additions to what was sent out last draft, if not, call in favor. And no surety releases, uh. We will be receiving a other referral from the town board, this time having to do with Uptown Landing. Uh, last night it was, uh, passed on to us for an advisory report, so it'll be on the August thirteenth agenda. If, uh, if need be, we have some time within the forty five day, uh, response period. And we could take care of it in our September meeting still, meet the forty five days. So, uh, see how it goes on the nineteenth or the thirteenth.
Can you call it up, uh, cloud's permit, Uptown Landing? Um, if you don't mind, Chuck.
Sure.
I. Bob asked the question, why, why are they doing it such zoning in that form based code that? Uh, we just resolved the form based code. Um, and the reason they said, what I heard last night, it's what pointed out to you, you can go to the as of right sketch plan. Right in the middle, right at the top of the page.
Yes.
Um, they're actually not gaining. Anything from what they could do under form based code. Uh, they could put. Uh. One thousand and eighty sixty two apartment unit, three story apartment buildings. And then an additional two hundred and seventy three apartment units in four story mixed use buildings. With fifteen thousand square feet of commercial use now. Probably that's too big to build and nobody would really want to build a one thousand unit apartment buildings. But that's what they can build without any approval from the town board or any zoning board.
Under, under the form.
Yeah, form base goes. Allowed them to build that and what they're proposing is six hundred units, so single family townhouses and apartments.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you put that on, can the propose?
I did look at that, your single family part of it.
Uh, just the regular overall I Z side. No, that's the developer's choice to do this. Not, you know, this is what presumably they think the market is looking for and what they'd like to build. But this, you know, is actually a reduction in units and density. What's that?
I want to feel an extra full size. A lot coverage.
Pretty high, I guess, well, it's gonna, no, because it's gonna be a bunch of different lots.
Someone.
Or else, no, not to the same percentage, actually, but really? If every lot's a thirty percent, the whole thing's a thirty percent. But. Lot coverage is something that you, in an area that you want to be more urbanized, I guess, is better, right? You want to be denser and the EPA promotes this because. It's better for stormwater, you had ten lots that were covered at eighty percent. It's better than ten lots covered at fifty percent, whatever it can, I should, I should. And I could provide everybody with the EPA's best management for stormwater practices and other. Density is good when it comes to stormwater protection of natural resources and it's.
Or where you're. Or uptown. Of where uptown, you also have. To the west or excuse me, east and north. Uh, apart and then I don't know what's behind.
Park is down by the south there.
It's down here.
But, oh, nice, well, open space surrounding.
I think it's like. We'll do this if we can get that.
So, well, this is, it's interesting, you have a park here, but if you were there. Distance is. I don't know, be twenty, this is the.
Center street.
You are the, a few hundred feet there, to get there, the other way, you gotta go, where, um.
A trail is something you should suggest, I just wanted to give, I mean, let's not get into it.
No, no.
Without you guys having agreed, but as you were reviewing it, I wanted you to be aware. Of the reasoning. Why the applicant suggesting and the town board is considering this. Cause it was the first thing that popped into your mind, Bob, and it's the first thing that popped into my mind when I heard about it.
I see the big difference being, uh, rental versus owners.
Yeah, my understanding is, uh, the townhouses are for sale, not for rent. Not that what?
You can rent not anyways.
And move to an apartment, kind of, you know, apartment, apartment rentals that takes the shape of the fountain.
Like an office that is like the rental office versus like.
Yeah.
It's a, an owner or someone rents out.
I didn't want to get into it too much, I just wanted you guys to be aware that there's an as of right. Um, and what that meant and. And they're not threatening to build that, that's just, they were showing it as. Look, we're not just trying to get away with something, but this is what we prefer to build.
Yeah, Mr. Cook and his entourage will be here thirteenth and he'll talk about the incentives and amenities and. Uh, very interesting concept, so.
Take a look at their enhanced environmental report, I think they're calling it.
It's one's nine hundred pages?
Uh huh, no, it's four hundred and twenty two pages.
That's why we can't download it.
Yeah, but it's an example of what, and you guys don't need that information on every project you get. When you get those bigger projects, uh, it shouldn't be a struggle. To answer the part two questions, so the applicant should have written it out and broken it down by topic for you, that's what you're seeing more and more. Boards are, um, demanding and I want to point out to you that you should be demanding it too. Regular man broke out some of that. Um, and I think that's for that project, that's appropriate. Uh, you should be getting that information maybe from the seat your handbook, the. Seat handbook threshold is, that's why I say. And then you've got that information and that backup to your decision. Uh, but this, it's an example of what I think is a real application. The procedural application.
Is there a traffic study?
Yeah.
In there, I didn't, I didn't get that deep.
All right, well.
Two to the, to the four hundred and twenty page.
Can I add or segue? Kind of to your last point there of saying the applicant should be giving us all of this information, we shouldn't have to be like pulling teams. This is a. Hypothetical question or a question just to you on, a question that I don't expect an answer for. Is there anything we, as a town, as a board, as a whatever acting body? Can do differently to mitigate? Like the last application we saw and the first application that we saw today where it was very obvious that. We weren't gonna, we weren't gonna find that space, we weren't gonna find that middle ground or, you know. They were over here and we're way over here, like is there? I don't expect an answer, but I, it's a question that I'm stupid.
So the, my response to the last application is, that's what the process is, you guys gave them good feedback.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I tried to give a little guidance, he said no, uh, I think it's an issue, uh, you know. I don't know what the zoning board will do because it's compelling, we want to sell more cars, to do that, we need to do this.
Right.
Um. But at the same time, that code, that's a talent, so. That's sort of a unique issue, the process is for you to give feedback and then the zoning board to pull them. Uh, now this one, I mean. I don't know, it, yeah, I don't know, that's, that's the process, the first one.
With the phasing and, I mean, he came in like, I'm not ready, like he came in like.
Yeah, that was weird.
Yeah, I think that was expecting more.
Yes.
Uh, cause Greg's fan knows, I mean, he knows the stuff.
Right.
Um. No, I, you know.
It. I was kind of like, it's, we've gotten into this in a couple of instances where. You know, we're like, okay, you're gonna get everything ready by this date, cool, we'll meet again in two weeks or a month. And then we come in and we're back in the, you know, round robin of the continuation, but. I know that's something that we talk about often, I just wanted to.
Well, that one was odd, because the board was very clear at the last meeting, we want to see this, this and this, and I asked for cross access assessments. And, you know, we started, you know, either say the letter, hey, by the way, it's all a month, start out, hey, by the way, it's all a month. Um, cause I never considered that, I didn't look for a lot and I just assumed there was one. Uh, when I reviewed this before the last meeting, um. That one, that was, that was odd, um, but, you know, when there's nothing. Comfortable about it.
Yeah.
And you're not comfortable, it exactly, okay, well, let's see if we can get you through. Fred didn't want to do it either, I think they hadn't figured out what they want to do. Um, and what, what you do is you say, we can't make a decision on, I, I would have kicked and screamed if that was where we loved it. We're about to improve.
Surprise the first thing jump up. We're still being recorded.
Well, no, but I mean, you, you, phasing is actually really important on a big project like that.
Yeah.
This one's different, because it's all on parcel and it.
Right.
It seems like it's sort of. Cut and dry, but you still need to do that.
Construction.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the answer is.
Express, I just wanted to share.
Express, and you can, you can also be. Ruder.
Yeah.
If it's frustrating you, you can express that frustration, you guys are all very civilized and courteous. Uh.
You can be a ruder.
No, I mean, I go and, I've been going in front of other planning boards my entire career.
Could be the hammer.
Uh, I'm sorry, no, I mean. I think you get, I think you do well getting your point across without being.
Yes.
But if it gets to be a problem, you're allowed to say, hey, we told you this, we're not gonna talk about it here.
Oh, I'm for myself, like I'm answering the question for myself, I'm gonna dip my toe into the. Maybe more stern and maybe say, well, maybe let's push it to the second meeting in a month or a month from now or what, like, let's just like, but. That's just for me. That's.
We all get tired of hearing the same information every, every meeting, but.
This is what I think actually still needed to be talked about. And I bet Greg did this, I mean, he knows enough.
It was purposeful.
I bet his clients, if he don't know, we don't want to lock ourselves in, and he brought him here to say.
He was demonstrating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. That's a, that's a gas, that's.
Yeah. Speculate.
Uh, and. Sometimes you get stuck helping demonstrate if you don't feel like doing that with your time and you don't be allowed.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, other referrals, uh, we sent that referral out to the Z B A on Fulmer. They had a report, we sent the advisory report to the town board on, uh, up there at, uh. Thomas Road.
Yep.
Thomas and Summers, so that's taken care of. So the last item is a goodbye. We got, this is Kristen, you've been a big help, appreciate all this, what you've given us. So you're gonna be a coffee taster?
I will be tasting a lot of coffee, but it's not my role.
Do you like coffee?
I do. I was there for eighteen years.
You said you're going back.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they have new owners, did a couple changes. Have to make sure they keep public.
Yeah.
Yeah. The smell of coffee. Where are you gonna be working, which?
Uh, the warehouse, um, corporate office, two fifty one, right on.
Oh, okay.
Right here, the owner's there.
Welcome to see sometime.
Sure.
Well, good luck, any plans of, the staff talked about? Please, no, no.
None that I've heard of.
You're not doing it.
Iron Eric.
Breaking somebody in?
No. I'm handing over the short term rental responsibilities tomorrow.
Who?
Sarah.
Sarah.
Sarah and then a little bit of like the initial review to stand.
So we'll sit in your place here.
I don't know.
Uh, my under, well, my understanding is temporarily what's been discussed, and this is just what your minds is. Uh, Sarah and Mike Murphy might alternate, uh, filling in for the time being. Um. Just, I already spoken about that, that's what they're thinking. Chris, any word on town manager?
Yes.
Any quote?
Mister John Thelmo. Current undersheriff of Ontario County was hired and appointed as town manager last night at the town board meeting. Um, his, uh. Employment will commence, I want to say August twelfth. Um. He was unanimously, uh, chosen and then voted for and appointed last night, but chosen, I mean, they've been. Uh, a while, you know, seven, a couple of weeks ago, it was unanimous, they're very excited. I'm very excited at the meeting, I think they'll do a very good job. Uh, it brings us to the position, uh, from his experiences undersheriff, a lot of budgeting. And municipal governance type, uh, experience, he, his, um. His sheriff's office uses the same accounting software as, I believe. Um, and then obviously it's undersheriff, he had a lot of management supervi- supervisory experience. Um, so I think he'll really do a great job and fit in well. That's all I can remember about his background, but, um, you know, I think he'll, he'll do a good job. Uh, I'm, add some to touch base with me and one of the things I'm gonna do is suggest that. You show up and watch you guys work and watch the zoning board work and introduce himself and. I think it's important, I mean, this is a big part, I don't know, I don't know, you know, it's about planning and zoning. Uh, maybe, maybe he's an expert in it for all I know, but, um, if not, you know, it's something he can get up to speed and. How long's he been in the sheriffs? Did he work his way up through the ranks? You know, this is just me on my uneducated, guys, my guesses, he's got twenty years in. Hmm, um, I mean, he looks about my age, maybe a little younger, but he'll be older, I don't know. My guess is he's got twenty years in and is retiring or eligible for, that's just a guess. Again, all right, begin, good luck.
Yes, good luck, Kristen, thank you.
Well said.
Great, Chris.
Oh, thanks for bringing that up, uh. How many of you still want me to make paper packets for these meetings?
As long as we can like chronically before a meeting.
That will change.
Same, same.
And this is the format you wanted and I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
And you can scroll down, one video. And media, uh meeting format, yeah.
Order.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there are multiple videos, it's too much.
Oh, yeah. Could you bring one packet? It's easier when I'm trying to run the media, I can refer to it.
I think that makes sense.
Plus, there's a oftentimes like the signature pages and stuff.
True, yeah. So if you could do a chairman's packet.
Yeah, it's not so much could you, it's. You were going to.
Otherwise, I mean, it's gonna be a lot longer because I'll be looking for things.
Yeah, that actually, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so we uh, did you move?
I want to make a motion to adjourn at eight eleven.
I'll say.
I.
That's it, you're done.
Eric, will it be in the cloud or would it?